Oh, thank you. Glad you found him.
It's a special.
Excited with strawberry cake. You ready? Okay. All right. Welcome back. The time is 2:49. We will begin with A7 discussion regarding comprehensive plan prioritization. Mrs. Sem.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I promise to not keep us any longer in this freezing room.
That was a good joke. Good joke.
Going back to comprehensive plan prioritization, we just talked about a lot of planning-related stuff on Saturday, and I thought we'll go back to the beginning of how this started, guided by our strategic plan 2022. It talked about developing a citywide comprehensive plan. There is a need. And today, we are just following up from our bigger discussion on the joint meeting where we talked about the tentative schedule for the project. And as Mayor and Council directed, we are proposing to push some of those dates in terms of bringing the contract back to Council with the selected applicant towards the beginning of April, after it goes through Planning and Zoning Commission, and then eventually do a 18-month total study process. The focus for today's discussion can be combined to this one slide, which is effective public engagement is key. And our request and question for the group is, should we propose additional funding in the budget for a robust public engagement strategy? And I'm just thrilled. The current budget allocation for this study is $270,000, spanned over the 18-month period or two fiscal years. Public engagement can take different forms. And as presented by Mr. Cole, it can be cost-intensive, too. If you really want to reach out to your constituents, if you really want residents to be involved, make this study a ground-up process versus an expert-driven process, then yes, we have to invest in that public engagement component. Those names you see on the slide, those are just some examples, like town halls, stakeholder interviews, resident business surveys, tiering committee meetings, design charrettes. There are so many ways you can reach target audience and also do overall bigger engagement. So that's what we are going to discuss here tonight or this afternoon and hear from you all. What is the direction moving forward?
Thank you. And again, thank you for your time on Saturday and for Council and staff, everyone that showed up. I know it was above and beyond, but it was definitely important as we came to this meeting because I think this is definitely a prioritization as we look to move forward, something we need to make sure that we are giving the right allocations to. I am definitely in favor, and after having additional conversations with Mr. Cole, making sure that we allocate enough money for public engagement in whatever way that looks like. He told me that the process worked well for them because they went away from a firm that typically does strategic planning and went with a firm that was primarily focused on public engagement, said maybe they can do the plan as well. And so, starting from a different standpoint, how do we get the people there to talk to him and have a conversation? We can do the plan and figure that out thereafter. I don't know what our process needs to look like. Is it a consultant that's truly running this process for us because there's so many moving parts? And then we find a secondary consultant that handles the engagement, can track it, can do other things, give us the performance metrics of making sure that we are getting the right type of feedback, the right unique individuals to provide input in this so that it's not 1,000 people showed up, but it's 100 unique people. We want it to be 1,000 unique people if we keep to that kind of goal percentage, or at least what they thought was a good percentage of people that actually showed up for the town of Pasadena. And with that, you know, can we make sure that we're providing those selling points, you know, as we brought up? Is there daycare for some of these meetings? Is there other opportunities so that parents and community members feel that they have the opportunity and things are going to be taken care of? And there's no excuse for them to not show up. So I definitely think that's important. And when you look at a plan of this size, if it comes with additional kind of focus and items for the community considered at the end of this in terms of how are we going to implement this, you know, what are the economic tools?
Right.
What can we afford? And what do we want to afford? And how does that look like? And how can we pull the various levers at our disposal with full community buy-in to move this forward? I think spending an extra 100, 200 grand and making sure that we have full buy-in and participation from our community at large will be the best dollar spent considering what this may cost us in the end. And so, I just want to make sure that we're all on board with allocating the right amount of money and going into the budget to see this through.
Mayor, can you remember, or maybe somebody remind us, how much did they, did he, in the conversation on Saturday, how much did they spend?
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
They almost had started with equivalent requests for the consultant portion as well as the public engagement. And I think they came back with two fifty.
Two fifty of a town of 115,000 people.
That's what I was going to say. That was my point. Two fifty for a community of 100,000. We are not at that point. I will argue we're 50,000. That is the number I'm sticking to. So do we think we can do that to, do we think we can do that at maybe half the cost based on what we know? Also, based on, you know, I would love to kind of separate that out. How much is the consultant going to cost us compared to how much money we're going to use for the engagement? Because I think that, you know, if the, for example, for Pasadena, and that's, I only bring that up because that's really the only one I compare to, is if, you know, 200,000 was for the consultant and 50,000 for that, so how do we, I think we need to, for me personally, I would like to see what would be the cost for the consultant compared to how much we're actually going to use on community engagement? Because that, I think, will give us a better direction as to how much we should allocate. I agree with the mayor. I think we need to allocate those funds. I just don't know if we need to allocate that much based on what we know right now, just to feel more comfortable. Because I do want to make sure that we are, you know, being financial stewards, making sure that we use, do a lot with, we always do a lot with what we have, which I think is great. But I do think we need to invest in this to make sure that, because it's a comprehensive plan for basically all three plans coming together, right? We know the West Side Plan is something that we've needed to do for a very long time. And so, but I do think we need to prioritize this and keep it going with the timeline that you gave us. I just think I need a little more information to be able to make the decision on how much we should allocate.
Absolutely. And if I may add, Mayor and Councilwoman, that's why on this slide you'll see I did not have a dollar amount there. Because when we sent the RFP out last year, late last year, we sent out with that budgeted amount.
Yeah.
And it might be that when the proposals come in, when the consultant look at the proposals, they see all these components, and they also, in their cost breakdown, they think about, okay, how much does this translate for them in public engagement versus writing the plan, doing the study, doing the inventory? So they will also look into that. So for us, from Saturday to today, we didn't have enough time to come up with the better information.
Sure.
But that's what we will be looking at moving forward. Because when the proposals come in, January 31st, those are the conversation we are going to have, that, okay, things have changed a little bit since we send the proposal out. Now we have more room to ask for a better or more robust public engagement. And not to forget that the key component that we identify in the RFP actually involve a very involved resident stakeholder engagement strategy. So we already put it in there.
Got it.
We want to see what they are proposing. Because sometimes that's also a cost-effective approach. Because if we already put out like a 400 to 500 K budget, they are always going to fit that one.
Oh, yeah.
So, once you put out that 270 K budget on your RFP, and they come back with, okay, we are going to offer you like three town halls, or creating the content for your website or your survey materials.
Go ahead.
So that's when we start those discussions and the negotiations. Going back to the point of whether, starting with the consultant that is primarily focused on public engagement versus the consultant group, which is primarily focused on the planning and land use aspect of things. So comprehensive planning teams for a bigger scale projects like this, they bring in multifaceted experts. So I've worked on comprehensive plan teams where they would have a consultant primarily focused, like Karen Walsh, I don't know whether you have ever heard of her. She does all the focus, not Texas engagements. So some of those comprehensive planning processes, the main team would also hire her as a subconsultant to totally direct the public engagement part of the study. So we can take that approach as well. Another thing I want to point out, and I know that was going to be a much bigger discussion, that's why I didn't want to get into the details of that, comprehensive plan you currently pointed out is for the whole city. It is supposed to look at everything, starting from, as Charles actually sent us a direction the other day, that we are also going to look at housing component as part of the discussion. So when we look at a comprehensive plan, it involves not only public engagement on the outside, but also on the inside, in the agency itself, among the different departments, public works, parks, parks and recreation, sustainability, all of us working together, being kind of the stewards of the plan, in-house as well as outside. Because that's when the plan truly becomes a citywide comprehensive plan. It's not supposed to be a pretty planning document. It's supposed to be a bible for the city. And that's what we are shooting for. I know I-
No, I just wanted some clarification. So the current budget allocation of 270 is what y'all, is what we approved in our last year's budget. And that's supposed to encompass all of this as of right now?
As of right now, that's what we-
And then your hope is that you will go and, you know, once we have a consultant and we get those bids and all of that, then if we need additional allocation, then-
Then we can expand on that.
And then I would just comment that, I know that one of the things that we discussed on Saturday was to kind of get away from this idea of the organized town hall as not being very effective. That becomes a gripe session. It's not a very effective way to do planning. And so, I just thought I'd throw that part out.
So in terms of town halls, I know that sometimes does become contentious, and sometimes people don't understand what's the focus of the town hall, and they start talking about irrelevant. And that's where we bring in the experts as well as staff and members of Council, kind of guiding that conversation. We used to call them design charrettes. For example, we would have these large maps, these large printouts where we would invite, we'll give them exercises. Okay, this is your city. You tell us. We'll give them, make it exciting. Give them Lego blocks. Okay, don't do the Creole zoning on paper, but if you see that red blocks mean commercial and yellow blocks mean houses, you live here, this is Valley View, this is I-35, where do you see these businesses go? Or do you really see the gray buildings on the east side remaining gray over the time? Where do you see those green blocks for the parks? Are they connected? Where do your kids go to school? Can they walk to certain facilities or can they not? It's very intuitive also for someone who is not in the field, for them to understand those exercises. Because town halls sometimes can become a one-way communication.
Right.
Whereas design charrettes or those kind of formats becomes more interactive.
Right.
And that's what I also took away from Mr. Cole's discussion afterwards. He pointed out that public input versus public engagement.
Right.
Where you were just asking them, okay, what do you want? Well, if someone, my kid just wants to have chocolate or strawberry cake. And that's his input. That's not his engagement.
Right.
Engagement is where you give them the options, tell them, okay, the pros and cons of each, and have them make that wise choice. Make it their choice, not your choice. And that's what we will be guiding this public engagement strategy towards.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
That's my line.
So I was trying to wrap my head around several things here. First of all, the budget that was presented by the consultant was basically 250 per, $2.50 per capita. And if you just applied that to a city our size, that's about $125,000. I don't know that that gets us to where we need to be. I really don't know. Okay. But in thinking about this, I was trying to think, and I kept circling back to some major conferences that I've been a part of. And I see this as a major conference, in my mind, that we're, and the people we're engaging is as much of the city as we can. And certain things are going to be more important. Parks and the comprehensive plan for a park might be more important to individual A than the streets to individual B, and so on and so forth. And so, I was thinking, okay, how do you do a town hall where, or I'm going to say a conference, because town hall is, to me, it does promote that one-way, for the most part, communication. How do you do a conference and then have like breakout sessions, if you will? And I'm just talking about positioning something where you can have different breakout sessions for the things that are important to each person. I go back to when we went, when we were having information presented to us about the creek. And we had that at the Branch Connection. And then staff was there and then made an overall presentation, Freezer Nichols did. And then, depending on where you lived, you went to a little breakout session, if you will, but it was in the same room. I think we need to have sort of separate areas because I can see this getting very loud. I don't know. But it's just, I'm trying to think of it that way, or maybe in terms of that, that's maybe a little easier to understand for some folks and might pique more interest.
I'm going to think you're on to something there. And it was kind of very similar to how they did the east side plan as well. You know, brought people in, they had breakouts, people were drawn as part of the charrette process. But I think that through these meetings, given that we're 12 to 18 months to having something to put in front of people, there's probably going to be an independent meeting on, we're dealing with parks tonight and doing this. And all the parks people come out and they're like, yay, let's get excited.
And then here's the art people and whatever else that needs to be included in this. And
I think that there's opportunity. But in terms of the numbers, let's be mindful, it was 250 for the plan, 250 for the engagement, 500 total. And this was in the 90s, I believe, the late 80s?
Yeah, 96.
96?
The east side plan.
98? I've heard that today.
Yeah.
Spice Girls?
Yeah.
No, no, no. When they did the-
So when you think about that time period that's passed, what does that dollar amount look like today? You're probably at 270 for a town our size on this. But I think public engagement, you know, where are we at from there, especially if some of those dollars are allocated for that? I mean, we just want to make sure that we're enhancing this with enough money to make sure that we have worked as hard as we could to knock on every door and unturn every rock to say, we're having a big meeting. We would really love you to be a part of it. Come put your two cents in.
Yeah, that's tremendously important. And again, you know, I guess I sort of compartmentalized what I was hearing, but I didn't, now I'm realizing, yeah, that figure was way back then. And I'm sure it's grown exponentially since then. So, but my big thing overall is, at the end of the day, is try to get as many people to attend as possible.
Absolutely.
In whatever way, even if they attend one meeting, or if they attend all of them, however many there are, just making it available for everybody to attend, which might include, you know, maybe you got somebody up there in sign language, maybe part of it's in Spanish, who knows? But-
I think there has to be considerations for all that, definitely. And, I mean, I think, I mean, in there, there were 115,000 people. 3,000, 3,100, 3,200 showed up, right? So they're right around 3%. If we go with 50,000, I mean, we're looking at 1,500 people. And so, what do we set at the benchmark as, how do we get as close to that number, if not more, as possible, so that we get full buy-in? Because outside of two elections in this town, average vote for a big event is 32 to 3,400. So if we can get half that buy-in, I think that's huge in terms of participation, the people that talk to other residents that are influencers and mavens and spread information. And I don't remember who brought it up. Someone did. And if it was you, then give yourself credit. But it was, how do we go back and figure out who came to the trash town hall? And how do we figure out who signed up for the shopping or the garbage cart pilot? Garbage cart pilot first, because those are people in the know and informed and engaged and are willing to rally people around them and make sure that we reach back out to those same people and say, come on down to this even bigger event, because do they help spread the word as well? I'm just thinking back to like the real big events and kind of hot-button issues that turned people out to say-
We also want to have it in a venue that can accommodate everything. So we might have to partner with like Paris or something.
We got a library. Yeah, we got tons of facilities.
Well, you got a big facility.
Yes.
Brookhaven.
Brookhaven, the idea.
Have it in Starland Park like we did with Norwood a couple of summers ago, which was very well attended.
People in the church, some in the schoolhouse.
Yeah.
Those are all extremely well ideas. And those strategies are going to come out. It's going to be a multi-pronged strategy with public engagement. We are not going to focus on one part of the town. So the town hall meetings or the design charrettes are locationaly going to be spaced out. Of course, there are going to be more than one charrettes or public meetings on the west side. There are going to be some on the central area. We'll pick the facilities location-wise as well as interest-wise. Some of these exercises would involve people just putting like sticky notes on a piece of large white paper. What are the top three things that you need or you desire in your community? That's how we are, you hit the nail right on the head, Councilman, then, that how you prioritize what people need. So we go back to people. And then, another important aspect that Mr. Cole pointed out is the follow-up, the feedback, the follow-up, that did we hear you right? That's very important. And once we get those feedback from people, we kind of summarize that and present that back to the group and saying, okay, we heard you. And that makes them feel involved. In terms of the dollar allocation, yes, we'll go back to the drawing board or the design board once the proposals come back in. And we'll be good stewards of the funding. And we'll make sure we utilize our existing resources as much as possible. We have an excellent design team in-house with Rachel and Amanda and Jeff. We will definitely use those. We have our resources in terms of our website. Our existing resources will be first fully utilized, and then we'll expand on the funding.
Keep in mind, we might need to allocate some more money.
Yeah, exactly. I'm more comfortable talking about dollar amounts to allocate, though, once we can first identify some consultants who can help build, have experience doing, building public buy-in and public awareness. And I think that could guide us in in terms of like how much money we need. But I think it's very important, and, you know, we need as many people to buy in as possible. And I think we should be able to get to comparable kind of numbers as Rick was talking about on Saturday. And again, he said 3,200 people came to 10 meetings. It didn't come to one or two. So-
I think, you know, once you bring back the RFPs, we can look at what they've included and then have another discussion about what do we want and what do we need to allocate for that and then figure that piece out.
That's the key. I mean, if they come back and say, we'll have one town hall or one charrette, I think we'd be uncomfortable with that as a count. And therefore, we would say we want more than that. What is the right more? Is that 10? Or is that five? Or what is that? So it would, I'm very interested in kind of, we're rebuilding the plan after having asked for something already. And that's okay. And that's, we're at a great position to do that. And we want to do this right and couch all of the parts and pieces that are happening simultaneously, the east and the west and the central and the 35 plan and the central, I mean, the stationary plan. We have the parks plan, all of these things rolling over together. And it's not just, you know, two or three plans. It's a holistic of bringing this together from a networking perspective. And there's software to show how all of these things, you know, come together and what the relationships are and where they are. And that's where we'll pay the consultants to prepare that. But getting that back to communication and making sure that we have people involved, you're going to put it out there. And if we have, let's say we have 50 people come, we have 50 people come. And I don't think, and the more, the better. I would really promote that. But we've got to be interested in, to your point, Robert, that if you have 50 people come one period, and then the next one, you may have 75, but is it the same 50? Can we track that? Can we look at who's engaged and how are we responding to all that? That's super important. And that's more than just sign in at the door. I mean, that's taking that information from a data perspective and really utilizing it and communicating with it. We have all of the individuals' contact information that we had on the polling survey that we did, you know, that was discussed this morning, engage those folks, this broadcast of continuous notification. So I'm excited about the opportunities, and I look forward to seeing what comes back in the RFPs here next week and then how we can move forward.
Might I add, the 2017 bond process, we specifically did not do town halls. Do y'all recall, we came in, we had pod set up? That was so one person could not dominate the group with a topic that was completely irrelevant to those three bonds. So you had subject matter experts with boards, and we got an opportunity to hear and talk in a group. And people understood it, even if they didn't like it.
Sure.
But they left understanding what was going on instead of, oh, they don't want to speak out loud and ask their question in a big town hall because other people are angry or they just, they don't want to publicly speak.
We had a lot of great one-on-one conversations during that.
Yeah.
You know, the type of setup.
So the format worked.
And you could tell, you could get follow-up questions from a person. You could tell that they didn't fully understand what you said. So you go a little bit further, you know, so you had better dialogue to make sure that you were really bringing your point across.
Correct.
Good point.
Anything else on this? All right. Look forward to seeing it all come back.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, final piece, questions wrap-up. So here, I know we've had a lot of discussion today, a lot of ideas probably bouncing around. But as we consider these nine CBOs and the touchpoints from that, you know, what do we like, what don't we like, what can be combined, what do we want to add? And, you know, if we don't like something, what do we potentially want to remove? You know, I haven't heard anything to that point here today, but I definitely want to get everyone's thoughts and opinions and let's discuss them so that we have a kind of collective consensus of these items and where we want to go so that Charles and everyone on staff can take them and run with them as we prepare for '22, '23. Terry, I know you had your notes there.
All right. Well, I'm just going to tell you some things that sort of stuck out in my mind after hearing some of the discussion. You could figure out where to place them. I think we most definitely need to take a more aggressive approach on our home purchase strategy for the neighborhood revitalization. That's a program that, there's always going to be a market out there. We need to adjust our standards accordingly because the market is moving. And if we want to keep even pace with the market, we need to look at adjusting our numbers in terms of what we're willing to pay in order to purchase some homes for that program. At the same time, I think that we need to adjust our demo rebuild incentives and the values that are associated with the program because appreciation and appraised values have moved such over the last couple of years. The other thing that really stuck out in my mind is, as we talk about the parks that we're bringing onboard and the beauty that our parks add to our city, they're also hand in hand, in my mind, goes, we have to address the tougher arguments that are part of this overall beauty of the city discussion, which involve on-street parking, boats, campers, and RVs, and maybe even thinking more of a city-owned storage facility option for such vehicles that could be a low-cost alternative to what the market is offering. You know, when people drive through our cities and see our median, see how beautiful and well-maintained things are, they see our parks and how pretty they are and how well-maintained they are. And in some neighborhoods, when you get off the main roads, oh, you see our streets lined with cars. This is a problem, and it's only going to get a little bit worse as density increases in certain areas. And so, this is a very difficult issue to deal with. But we were elected to try to deal with difficult issues. I remember- I remember when Councilwoman Reyes was here, we had talked about trying to tackle this in some very key areas of the city, and everybody at the time was, not in my neighborhood, not in my district, well, we're sort of at that point, we're beyond that point in some areas. I will tell you, Myra, for one, is a street that you can barely get down at night when everybody's off work. It is lined with vehicles on both sides. I drive a Tahoe, same size as a police vehicle, and it is very difficult for me to get through. I can't imagine what it would be like to drive a fire truck or an ambulance through there because they're a little bit wider. We have to try to adjust these things because this is the beauty of our city also. It's just, for some areas, it's more the nighttime beauty than anything else because that's when it's a problem, but I would like to see that added in some, in one of these elements somehow or as another element because I believe it's that important to our city. I guess we adjourned it, then.
So I'll go next. I have a few things. I think we had a really great discussion. I know a lot of us kind of broke it apart and gave our feedback as we went through each component. I would say overall, investment in communications and really thinking outside the box when it comes to how do we communicate better, especially after seeing that survey, just reiterating again, how can we be more strategic based on the neighborhoods that are within our city? Because let's face it, every neighborhood looks very different. You know, not in an extremely, but to a certain extent, there is a difference based on demographic, based on the type, based on even just look at zoning, things like that. So how can we just be better communicators as a city with our residents? Making sure that we leverage relationships, making sure that we look at our partnerships, not only locally but regionally, to help make some of these things happen that we're trying to make, and that's something that we talked about throughout our presentations as well. And along those lines is looking for those federal, state and regional funding opportunities. I don't think that it always has to come out of our pocket, but how do we leverage those grants? And I think our staff is in a really fantastic job of doing that, but really having extended conversation with our county folks, with our federal folks, because there are a lot of discussions at the federal level around infrastructure funding and those types of things. So I want to make sure that we stay in tune with our electeds at all levels so we know a little bit more about what's going on, and I think we need to bring them in on a more concurrent basis so they can tell us some of the things that are going on that we may not be privy to, not only from a policy perspective, but also from a funding perspective. And also looking at just general safety, and I bring this back up, it's something we talked about on Saturday, but if you look at the walkability, especially, you know, I'm looking at, you know, in my district, for example, near the Mustang Station area, it's so dangerous to even walk to our theater because the sidewalk is so close. So looking at, and this may be part of the comprehensive plan, but looking at opportunities on where we can acquire some more, you know, land, if you will, to be able to extend some of those sidewalks to make things more walkable as we expand our economic development opportunities, and not only on the west side, I think even on the east side as well. And then, I can't even read my writing. And then also, you know, Mayor, you mentioned this, is just looking at our commercial potentially that is close to our residential, right? And trying to make sure there's more of a buffer, and especially with the I-35 expansion, are there opportunities to increase some of our economic development dollars to acquire some of these things? And Terry, you mentioned it too, like that house on the corner, you know, that would have been a good opportunity for us as well. And so just looking at not only our residential opportunities, but even maybe our commercial opportunities, and again, I think the comprehensive plan, I think, will help us to figure out what is going to be the plan for us in the next ten to twenty years. You know, even looking at the west side, it's industrial right next to residential, so do we need to create a bigger buffer? Is Valley View that buffer? And do we need to look at, you know, commercial lands out the Valley View, just to make sure that there's more of a neighborhood feel in that area, or look for innovative ways? And I know we're having our planning and zoning retreat where we'll look at a similar area in Fort Worth and what they've done, so look forward to that. And the last thing, I think it's just looking at policy. So not all of it has to do with, you know, funding. I think us looking at innovative ways for us to, and I'll give the example of just adding an email address on our zoning, on our planning and zoning notice, right? Maybe adding more information on what is the zoning case and not just doing, adding a bunch of legal jargon because that's where folks get really confused, and being more strategic with our planning and zoning to actually not just put a sign up, but put more of a, more details of a number or, and I'm just throwing that out there as an example due to recent communications, but how can we change policy in a way that makes it easier, going back to communications, on the way we do things? Because I think we've been doing things, we've been doing things the same for a really long time, and it's not until something, you know, happens that we realize, okay, maybe there needs to be a new way of doing that. So this may not be something related to, you know, a big comprehensive funding plan, but really looking at our, the way we do business as we externalize some of our communications on making things easier for folks so they can communicate back with us. And I am a big policy wonk, so that's why I bring that up, but anyways, those are just a few things that I think are important as we really look at our strategy for the year. And I will add one more thing, you know, when we come into budget, it's a lot of stuff that comes to us at the same time. So I would love for us, and I'm going to challenge you, Charles, because I think this is under your wheelhouse, how can we be more strategic in bringing some of that stuff in in little bits and pieces to where it's not just all at once? And I know it takes a while for staff, so I don't want to put any burden, and maybe it's not, you know, very specific numbers, but looking at, this is, you know, this is what we're looking at as far as budget, these are some of the buckets that our departments are looking at, is this in line with what we're talking about? Because it is a lot of information being digested when it comes to budget season and having to, you know, having to do calculations right then and there and all of that, and I know we've talked about it in the past, but I'm open to your suggestion, Charles, and maybe not today, but as we think about, think through this, how best to really kick off the budget process now and then really try to give us some hints as to what is it that we think that departments need, so that way when we get to our retreat, I think we're a little more prepared as we go into, actually diving into the actual numbers. So with that, Mayor, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
First, I just want to say thank you so much to all of the staff who presented today. I know that y'all doing this for us is intense and it always comes at this time of year, which is when y'all are doing your initial audits and, I mean, that's just a lot, and I hope you understand that I definitely appreciate you for, and I'm sure my colleagues do as well. And I just want to echo again, Councilmember Rotana's notes, I'm really excited about when we're looking at our strategic planning and our comprehensive plan, you know, increasing the walkability of the city and making sure that all of the different parks are connected. You know, the, it seems like this year's entire theme for, since our Board of Director, our Board of Commissions lunch has been on collaboration, and that's what I see with this as well, is how do we make our plans more collaborative? How do we make our departments more collaborative? How do we engage our citizens so that there is more collaboration? You know, how do we get our citizens and our businesses the ability to collaborate with each other through some other form other than vehicle prior decisions? So I'm excited about, you know, that direction that we're headed, and I look forward to seeing that kind of more of a resounding theme on our comprehensive plan, so.
All right. Tracy, you took the kudos, and others have already said thank you to the staff, so again, I'll add to that, thank you very much, all that has gone into this meeting and all the others that have gone on. I'll go back to emphasize the communication aspect again. I think it's kind of the heart and soul of getting our quality message out to the residents amongst ourselves from a knowledge management, how are we arriving at these decisions, and making sure that we put the best effort. We can't, the old adage of, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink, but if we do our part, that information lives on, in sometimes perpetuity on the website, you can go back and refresh yourself on what was said and what was decided at previous times. We have to do a good job of linking those things together. The website, we've talked about, being really that focal point for the community and all of the sundry other media that ties into that, the updated potential for city manager reporting, and we've talked about that, but we recognize we're not eliminating anything, we're packaging it differently and allowing it to be utilized and consumed in different manners. Very excited about the comprehensive plan, that was one of the elements that I, you know, campaigned on years ago. Having sat in the chairmanship of planning and zoning, I know how important it is, and as we become a bigger city, a more diverse city with different areas that are now, you know, vibrant and working well and headed in a positive direction, it's time to bring all of those parts and pieces together and make it easier for staff to execute on, for developers and for residents to understand what is going on. So we're on the right track. It's going to be a big undertaking, and we all have to recognize it's going to be a big undertaking, and having a consistent message and understanding all the details, and people are going to look to us, as they do already, for those answers, and if we don't have those answers, we're going to have to seek those answers out and work collaboratively and share what we learned, and we do that amongst ourselves, but we'll be even more so when we have such a large undertaking to achieve. Overall, I think we're headed in the right direction. I don't have anything to really add. I think there are a lot of spot issues and Terry, you know, parking and on-street parking, you know, it varies from neighborhood to neighborhood, and yes, some of it is the dynamics of the physical width of the street versus the uses on those streets. If you go up on Trend and Enterprise, if you use different examples, or Garden Brook, as we know, or Towerwood, you have commercial-type on-street parking, which is just as challenging at times as residential parking at night, and it's during the day. And I've had conversations with business operators up there, it's dangerous, and the chief knows that we've had, you know, somebody's pulling out, trying to get around a eighteen-wheeler that's, you know, parallel parked on the side of Towerwood or Garden Brook, and they get hit because they didn't see another vehicle. And so we need to look at those situations, and that's a wider, that's a wider, you know, right-of-way street. So we've got some challenges there, and I don't think we're going to have a one-size-fits-all sort of addressment to this, and we have to be very careful for that. And so I'm interested in tackling those. I've never been shy to take on a, you know, a project that nobody wanted. I've made a career out of that in my, in my organization. And so you have to face those tough questions, but you have to look at options and partnerships as Cristal has talked about, very important to build upon those, and so I'm looking forward to what's ahead and want to work together with both my peers here at the table and staff and the residents, and I've been engaged with them, you know, from the very, until the minute I got elected. So thank you, Robert.
Councilmember just?
My turn, or my last?
No, I'm last, but you can give a second to last.
I'm next to last.
Yeah.
You're pinultimate.
Correct. Good usage of that word.
You have to not mess that word.
It's the only place it fits.
I've got some more. Yeah, I'm going to be brief, just time management, and I agree with a lot of things that have been said by all of us here, and I think, just to back up for a moment, I think this was a perfect kind of sequence, having our discussion on new urbanism and a real expert who's done it and done the community buy-in and involvement, and, you know, I just couldn't get over those pictures he showed us, you know, like before and after, and look at this intersection, and look at this one, and not talking about changing everything, but changing some things, and not always high-dollar cost involved in those things as well. And, yeah, I think our strategic objectives for the year, I agree with them, and there's a lot of things I could dive down into, I don't want to do that, but I think the overarching thing for me is communication, and we've been talking about it in other forums as well, and both internally and externally to our constituents and our base, the citizens, I think that's important. It's something that's a challenge, and as I said earlier today, I think we need to have a multi-pronged, a multi-strategy, you know, how to reach people and touch them in different ways, and that's going to be an evolving challenge. On housing, attainable housing, diverse housing, I think this is an important issue, and not just because I work in real estate, but, you know, sometimes people ask me, is it a good time to buy real estate or should I wait or whatever? And I just say, look, good economy, bad economy, you're employed, you're unemployed, you've got kids, you don't have kids, everyone's got to live somewhere, you know, that's not, you've got to live somewhere, it's not really a choice. And housing is only going to get more expensive. I think inflation will go down, I think some of the bottlenecks in the pipelines, you know, for getting products and commodities will go down, but we still have more people than we have housing, and that's a tough issue for the whole country, but I think we need to look at being creative, and I think maybe we need to examine some of our codes and maybe look at making some changes. I've discussed with some people before about opening some things up to allow duplexes, where on the same size of a piece of property, you can build, say, a duplex or a two-story, and we've seen some of that on some of the field trips we've done, where that's been done very tastefully, and you get the density, it also ties into the whole multi-generational housing, and has a lot of benefits and things, and I think it's often misunderstood. But, and as we know with the Renaissance Program, we're trying to find that missing middle, which was also something that Mr. Cole discussed in our presentation Saturday. That's going to be very difficult, and the missing middle is different price point and different situation for different people. You know, it's easy for us to say, well, this is only X to X dollars, that's the middle. Well, for some people, that's like way over, they'll never be able to reach that, and I think we have to, you know, be aware of those things. I also think that point number seven on sustainability, I think that's really critically important, and I think it touches, you know, everything that we want to do, everything, every department in the city, and to me, that's really important because when we look down the road, ten, twenty years, we want to have the facilities and quality of life and things, but, you know, we need to have the clean air and sustainable buildings and things that we're not having to tear down buildings and, you know, renovate them in five years or ten years, and it's just, the whole topic encompasses so much. I think it's something we try to, need to try to be mindful for in all of our planning in the different departments, and that's about all I have.
Thank you. All right. First thing I, I guess, just want to make sure that we all agree on in the intent behind the CBOs is that CBO one is not more important than CBO nine. Right? These aren't, these aren't a ranking. Like, these are our priorities. All get equal weight.
Super important to convey that all the way through our message. Equal-weighted.
I just want to make sure that, you know, that's what we're all agreeing to, and that's what we all understand, that, you know, equal importance, and this is what we're driving towards.
Can you put the CBOs back up there?
Sure. But hearing everyone's comments, you know, Terry, when I think about, when you talk about the revitalization, the updates, do we look at rates, you know, the incentives, what are we offering? You know, that definitely falls into CBO six, right? Like, that's still there, that's still something we can touch upon, but we can also add in the idea of what are we doing in terms of acquisitions of commercial properties in other areas that I think, in terms of CBO six, that point is still there. So Cristal, that point that you brought up, we can easily roll that into that topic. In terms of, you know, your, when I look at the parking issue, and Councilmember Merritt brought up very valid points. You know, you have some areas that, no problem at all. You have some areas that are perceived problems or actual problems. And what are those constraints? And I really think that that issue should fall into CBO1. Like, let's put this in terms of the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan for the entire community and allow us to come together through these charrettes, these design processes. Hopefully, we have members from every neighborhood that can come up with the collaborative approach of how we all feel about parking. It shouldn't be five, six people in a room, each with an idea of how they feel they're going to solve an issue for that street or that street that doesn't work for the other streets. Like, we can't have too many plans. I feel the parking situation should be centered around equality and equity in terms of what we're allowed to do with our properties, our streets and everything else, and treated differently. Now, if you're in a commercial zone or a residential zone, obviously, there's different points. But let's come together through this process and have that long-term approach for how we're going to address this as a whole community. And let the whole community buy in on that because you always have two schools of thoughts and differing opinions on these. So let's hear them all. Let's see what actually rises to the top is the consensus from our community as we work through that. And I think that'll help address this issue. I've been on council five years. Every 18 months, this issue comes up. Every 18 months, we hear that things are fine. Police and fire can get through, you know, and that's our big issue. And we're hearing that from them and not from our perception because some of, you know, maybe I don't drive as well as the next person. And it is a little bit more challenging for me to get through some of these areas. And so I think taking it out of this hand and putting it into collective, I think might be the best approach for that situation. Is it, you talked about grants, infrastructure funding, everything else. I would love to bring in the North Texas Commission. They sent out a wonderful summary of BBB, the infrastructure plan, everything else, the grants and opportunities that are available to us. Let's have a conversation about that, get that update so that we're all aware of the different things that we could be leaning on, looking to that might spur different ideas. But if you remember the sustainability plan that they brought forward at the last meeting, there was a piece on economic sustainability. I feel that this slides into there. And so leveraging these opportunities, which over the past five years, in my opinion, staff has done an amazing job in terms of leveraging money from outside of our community, outside of entities that aren't the residents and the businesses, a farmer's branch, to make our projects even better than what they are. And that is the nature of the sustainability portion of, you know, the economic well-being of our community. And so I think, you know, we can look at that and add that in there and focus on that in terms of what we need to do. The rest of the items that were brought up, in my opinion, well, sorry, CBO2 still falls into the housing. I mean, that's a direct, one that can be talked about later. But the rest of it, CBO9, how are our boards and commissions collaborating more? How are we communicating? Where is the innovation coming in terms of where we're reaching out to people and the way they respond to things, as you were talking about the zoning cases, other things like that? So, you know, I think from the group and what we've heard, these nine are the right nine to keep moving. I didn't hear anything that was, you know, outside of this, that needed its own category, that needed to be modified, anything else. These priorities, these goals, the ideas that you have, the things that you want to discuss, all roll into these various categories. And if I'm missing something there, you know, I would say speak up now. Otherwise, I think staff has what they need to move forward on these nine priorities and kind of objectives as we move forward.
No objection, but just an add, just to remind ourselves, but we only had seven CBOs in the prior plan. So we've expanded ourselves going forward. And all of the seven that were previous are carryover. They may be worded slightly different, but there, we've moved those forward. And so we've added to this. So I think it's important to know that there's a history. We just didn't come up in a vacuum for this.
Along those lines, like CBO3, that was a huge thing at one time. We've kind of got that, a plan for that as an example.
And we don't stop once we complete it. This, these are one to three short-year priorities that kind of get the council focused and budget resources on these initiatives. So for example, sustainability, we've gotten, we're executing quite a bit of that. It says council, does there still more to be executed in a higher frequency than we already are executing? Because we've kind of got a good baseline for those. And so one thing we would ask the council to consider is there's not a rule on how many. Generally, 10 is kind of as high as you want to go, but we can go higher. But you can also go lower as well. So that's one thing for you all to consider is if we achieved it. Because some of the, some have rolled off over years because we've gotten there and we've gotten that comfortable cage we want to be in.
I think the way you brought that up, do, I mean, a lot of the drainage and retention that we're doing now, I mean, is outside of a few of them because it depends on how the easement reads. Could you just slide that down, CBO3 down into CBO4?
Oh, yeah, correct. Absolutely, you could.
Because if the priority of it is we've done the, you know, the creek, the creek plans are done, you're off and running, oh, Mark was here, off and running. You know, we have a new drainage study plan for the entire city. I mean, with Bella Road coming in, we're finally getting that detention pond over there that's going to alleviate some of the pressure from the east side coming west. I mean, I think, as you kind of identified, maybe a lot of that is already kind of accomplished, set in motion. And now it's just, we just need to follow up on it to where does CBO3 fall under CBO4? Because those assets that we use for drainage and everything else, you know, are kind of us, the problems that we've tackled and addressed and something that we need to maintain and take care of in the future. But a lot of that's been addressed to where the focus might not be as high now as it was the last three or four years. Counselor Lynn?
Well, so I would ask the, I guess the other way to look at it is, do you leave that on until the money has been appropriate, until it's actually in a budget to take action? Now, to Ben, no, like the $1.3 million that we talked about.
Smart meters?
In the smart meter program, until we formally take some action on that.
Do you move smart meters down to sustainability?
Well.
But it's also, it's also a public asset because we own them, we maintain them, and we got to fix them later.
But I was going to say, like to Ben's point about sustainability, I mean, the Sustainability Committee gave a pretty good report. And I think they have a roadmap to follow that's going to probably sit in place for three to five years. So do we need that on here? Because they're sort of off and running with their plan. Or do we keep it here so you can periodically keep an eye on it? I would argue, you know, that's why they give us yearly updates or bi-yearly, whatever. But I'm not, I guess I don't understand maybe how long something has to stay on. Because it's, even if it's not on the list, it's still important to the city.
So when I look at this, when you look at how long should it be here? Sometimes we've changed some of the wording to fine-tune these a little bit as well. To me, if you look at that sustainability one, it was identify sustainability initiatives, it kind of changed and then moved to the execution mode. But I look back to when we first added this, which I think was about three years ago, how far the sustainability program has come. Has it gotten to a level that council is comfortable with at the rhythm they're at now versus where they were? Has it moved up? And the drainage one's a great one for that because about three years ago, we had a lot to figure out. We had the reach concept hadn't been developed yet. The neighborhood partnership program hadn't been realized as an opportunity, as a tool to help with some of the, help our residents out. So we've built through you all these policy pathways. And so for me, it's council, from when these were here, have we made enough progress to where you're comfortable seeing those other priorities move up? Or we're at a good spot? Or you're, because staying on here means execute sustainability initiatives stays. We go back to sustainability and say, more.
Yeah. This is, this is our takeaway from councils. This, this staff is where we want you to focus. And everything else, we were kind of comfortable where you are at. As an example, we've had code enforcement on here before. As an example, one thing that's not, that, that has been here in the past is public safety. There's not a single one on public safety. And so it just, and obviously, we're not going to just say, you can have eight-minute response. It's just, we're, we've got four-minute response. Council is comfortable with that, that it's assumed that you're going to continue to at that level. But these are additional focus areas we want you to really beef up, make better.
These are the forefront cultural, current pulse of the city.
Well, as it relates to sustainability, like, we haven't adopted the plan yet. Like, that still is coming forward. And, you know, I want us to have focus for a year or two to make sure that that plan gets the attention, action and execution that it needs, at least for the next two years, so that they're off and running and knowing, okay, we have budget to do stuff. It's now focused, it's ingrained in everything that we're doing as that plan kind of suggests. And I think back and I think about this as the comprehensive plan as well. Like, I think that whatever group that we are utilizing to be the steering committee on this plan, once that plan, if it is adopted, you know, let's assume it's adopted, that group still needs to stay on for a year or two since they were so ingrained in it to make sure that that is still being executed as it gets going. And then, you know, that inertia's kind of happened and it's off and moving.
It moves from the strategic, and Charles and I had this conversation, Robert, you and I had it as well. It moves from the strategic portion to the tactical of actually, how do we implement these action plans? And then we have an action plan and then we actually do it from the operations perspective. And so it's all three levels. You just don't, it's great to have a plan, a strategy, but if it sits on a shelf, it does no one any favors. And if we don't continue that, to your point, Robert, it is super important to continue to make sure that you're going to find, hey, we thought we could do this, but tactically, we can't get that done. And we may have to shift and move 15 degrees, 30 degrees to one direction or the other, but we can still reach the same objective. And so then we readjust the tactical plan to get to the action plans, or those tactical plans, which are the action plans to get to the actual operations. And so therefore, we can look at it holistically. And you have a thread, and that's where you're driving, to have a thread of continuity from the initiation to the execution. And that's super important.
And that's essentially where we're at on the drainage and retention is. We identified the issue. We developed a strategy.
Sure.
We got everything done, passed. And then for two years, we focused heavily on executing on those 25 items and the other pieces of the drainage and retention that needed to be addressed, like some of the dredging and other things that is now, now that ball is rolling.
Yeah, we have an ongoing funding source.
And we've identified funding, potentially for every thing that we want to do on that list, it'll be done by 2023, as well as we've all talked in here about that last piece of the meters. We think we know where that funding's coming from and how we're going to execute and where we need to go in the next eight months to be ready to execute on that. And so, I mean, I think that could, like I said, does that roll down into high-quality public assets? And, you know, as part of the sustainability and back to the comprehensive plan, like, too many times have we, as a community, had a plan that we're now going back and looking at and saying, this doesn't make any sense because enough wasn't done with that plan upfront. Did we allocate, did we not allocate enough resources? Do we not, you know, as a community, say, hey, we're going to put our focus and energy into it like we've done all these other things to get that rolling? And that's where I think having that group after the strategy and plan is put in place, as you said, the tactical, the execution point, carry that forward until it's now a sustainable thing on its own. And I think same with the plan here, like, that needs to be a focus for another year or two just to make sure that, because there's policy stuff we need to take care of in-house. There's funding and opportunities that we need to give to the committee to say, we are going to address these items that you've put as a priority through your, through your advice and focus on this. And so I think that's where some of these need to stay. But, I mean, outside of, you know, CBO8, implement recommendations, you know, that's that same thing we're just, just talking about now. We need to figure out how, what do we implement now as it relates to what we're about to undertake with how this pairs into the overall plan. But I think there's opportunities to do that. But outside of that, yeah, I could see Ben where we take it from nine to eight. I mean, does anyone have a problem with that? Or do we feel we're moving drainage and retention off too soon?
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with that. I've been talking about that and we've been moving it, like you said, moving along with it. I'd be comfortable with that.
Nine is fine, but eight is great, you know? The round.
In that case, for council, the staff will need about a month from now to digest your feedback, come together. And then in mid-March, we'll start bringing to you ideas about how we're going to, for feedback from you all to make sure we're meeting your objectives. So if it's in motion, and then once you all say, hey, you're on the right track, they'll start building their budgets for Shirelle to align to your priorities and make sure we get those achievements in there.
So Robert, just to clarify again, can you repeat what, what is being consolidated?
CBO3 and CBO4.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for the group? Charles?
One thing that I constantly have to remind myself about, you know, and it's probably true of many of us, is that we're, local government is kind of what we're, we focus on. And sometimes we forget that the vast majority of residents, and I do say the vast, a lot of residents, they're just living life, raising family. And as long as their garbage is picked up on time and the parks are kept nice and the streets don't have potholes, they're okay. And that's the level of interaction with government they're okay with because they've got other priorities. You know, as long as I can remember, we've talked about, as long as I can remember with this city, we've talked about better ways of communicating with residents. Today, we've talked extensively. All of you mentioned communicating, better communication, better, and I understand that. There's always opportunities to better communicate. What I ask of you, because we've also started this whole conversation with performance measurement. And so my question to you is, what is, what is that mark of success? Because we can always say, staff, do more, do more, do more. But at some point, you kind of beat your head against the wall like, my God, we're doing it. We're doing twice as much and it's still not good enough.
Correct.
And I'm not, and maybe that's, there's not a measure of good enough. But I might, my, but I, if there is, I'd like to know that from y'all. At what point, what metric would you say, we see that communication has improved and is better and we think you're going in the right direction? Because that would be immensely helpful if we knew that, you know. Can we, do we need to double our readership of branch connection? Do we need to have more meetings with the community? I, it'd just be very, very helpful if I could, if staff could get that kind of information.
Sure. And that is everyone's homework. We will bring that back in.
And you're fair to ask that, Charles. Super important to clarify. And I think we talked about that a little bit before. What is appropriate? And we need to figure out what that is. What are the five items? And I think I said that in the opening question or a comment. You know, what are, what's the most important of the performance metrics that we want to show up front? And we need to be clear about that. So if it's, you know, if it's not animals in the shelter, which is a piece of information we collect, might not be the first thing that I would put out front, you know? It would be something we collect, it's there, but it's not necessarily. So I think we need, not only amongst ourselves to get that, but get the feedback from the residents. Because I've had people talk to me and, you know, not getting the information I need. What, where can I go? How, I'm having challenges getting it. So we'll need to be a sounding board to the residents as well. And so we'll be able to bring that information back. And I think we talked about feedback loops of, you know, there's a whole bunch of opportunities for that. But it's fair that we need to bring that kind of first step. What are the two or three things that we could ask staff to do to measure and be measured by? And how are we trending them correctly?
All right. Staff, thank you for your time today, for being here. A lot of you all day and many of you have kind of popped in. If you re-watch this video, I know I will. And so I just want to say, we do appreciate the time and the gene effort. And I hope, hopefully, what we gave you today gives you what you need as we move through the next six to nine months to prepare for budget season. Shirelle's already dreading that word.
She's already working on it.
But, you know, with that, I will say, we will go ahead and adjourn today's meeting at 3:58. Got you out of here by four. Terry, and we will see you all at the council meeting next week.
Excellent.